... meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We'll go ahead and open up the city council first real quick. Call to order, and Madam Clerk, would you please call Ron?
Councilmember Brightigum?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Tuha-Win?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to lead us in invocation, followed by Councilmember Bowie? Can you do the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence as we meet this evening to conduct business for our city government. Please enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what's best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. In serving our community, may we also honor you. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flags and put your hand on your heart and repeat that verse. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, and now I'll go ahead and recess city council. I'll hand it over to George to conduct the housing authority meeting.
We will open the housing authority meeting. Can we have a roll call? Or, I'm sorry, attendance.
Commissioner Beckles is absent tonight. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Deidre-Win?
Here.
Commissioner Tan-Win?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Brightigum?
Here.
And we will move to oral communications. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on any items on the housing authority tonight? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and move to consent. Do we entertain a motion? Or, I'm sorry, 2A.
No, these are consent. It can be voted on at the same time.
Yeah, I'll move the consent calendar.
I second it.
Call for roll call?
Okay.
I'm trying to get that right.
Commissioner Tan-Win? Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuha-Win?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Chair Brightigum?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Okay, any matters from commissioners? Seeing none, we will adjourn till the next meeting Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Back to city council.
Thank you. We'll reconvene city council. Do we have to do roll calls, Terry, tonight? Or is that, like, is the button thingy not working?
No, you're just for housing.
Just for housing.
It was just for housing.
Okay, got it. Alright, we'll reconvene city council. Takes us on to presentations. We do have one community spotlight tonight for our 25-plus-year employees. So, item 1A.
Okay, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a distinguished group of individuals celebrating milestones, the city of Garden Grove, with the city of Garden Grove, having dutifully served the community for 25 and 30 years. There are several honorees who are unable to be here tonight, and I'm just going to mention their names before we get started with the others. So those 25-year employees are Charlie Danley, Juan Medina, Jason Perkins, Alex Valenzuela, and 30-year employee James Franks. At this time, I'd like to call forward the honorees who are present and give brief introductions. And so, once I call your name, please stay up in the front, and we'll take a group photo at the end, okay? So, we're going to start with our 25-year honoree, Rita Kramer. So Rita, if you could please come forward and stand before us. Rita began her career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a community services officer in 1996. As a field report writer, she took crime reports, wrote traffic accident reports, and conducted crime scene investigations. In 2000, Rita was hired as a code enforcement officer with the city's Neighborhood Improvement Division. The code enforcement unit is now under the city's Building and Safety Division, and last year, we're pleased to report that Rita was promoted to senior code enforcement officer. Next, we have our 30-year honorees, and I'm going to begin with Captain William Allison. So William, or as I know him, Bill, began his career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a part-time police cadet in 1991, and became a full-time police officer in 1995. As a patrol officer, he was named Orange County Auto Theft Officer of the Year for five consecutive years for locating stolen vehicles. In 2008, William was promoted to sergeant, and nine years later, to lieutenant. In 2019, he promoted to captain. We now call him Captain Allison, where he oversees patrol, special services, and special weapons and tactics. Congratulations, Captain Allison. Next, we have Timothy Kovacs. Timothy, or as his colleagues know him, Tim, Tim began his career with the Garden Grove Police Department as a reserve officer in 1992. He was appointed as a full-time school resource officer in 1993. In 1994, Timothy promoted to full-time police officer, where he worked a variety of assignments such as patrol, traffic, gang suppression, and field training. In 1998, Tim promoted to master officer and to the rank of corporal in 2010. Next, we have Teresa, or as most of us know her, Teri Pomeroy. So Teri started her career with the city in the Public Works Department, just like me. She worked in several departments, including finance, community services, and the former Community Development Department. In 2006, Teri was hired in the city clerk's office as a record specialist before being promoted to deputy city clerk in 2007. In 2017, she was appointed city clerk, and as city clerk, Teresa guides the council members through a number of critical initiatives, including the implementation of evolving election mandates and complex election cycles. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of these distinguished individuals with a memento in appreciation of their many wonderful years of dedicated service to the city of Garden Grove. The city is proud of their accomplishments and looks forward to many more years of success in their city careers. Congratulations, everyone.
Yeah, of course.
That doesn't happen every 30 years.
Should I start up?
Yeah.
I know. The routine. Okay. I'm so tall.
One, two, three.
May I go back there, too? One, two, three. One, two, three.
One more.
Okay.
The professional one.
One, two, three. And one more. Yay! Only 20 more years of going. Never seen you turn red like that before.
Alright. Do I get five minutes?
Alrighty, that takes us on to oral communications. We'll open up oral communications. I do have half a dozen cards, starting with Anna Parker.
Thank you for your time. Since December, we are having an issue with a neighbor, and it was very hard to even find how to contact them. When we came to the city, the city clerk told us that to dismantle part of our house that has been there since 1955. After months trying daily to get some attention, we even mentioned here that we would pay to fix that, and the city representative told us we would not have to pay to do that. Finally, a neighbor that cares for the city, worked here for many, many years, was at the house and saw it was very wrong, showed the city construction should stop, and the city came over and stopped it. On the next day, neighbors promised to build a wall, but there was already court scheduled because there is no room left for a wall at that side. So they got away lying to the city, saying they would build a wall. Last week, they promised a court. They're not building a wall because there is no room for it. So they lied at court, and now, for us serving and attorneys, we already spent $30,000. Neighbors are mad at us because, of course, we're going to charge them for that. And now, we cannot even have a safety wall between us. It's an unsafe proximity. So, how can the city help us? We already know, hey, if you replace here, here, dismantle a little here, it's going to cost the least possible. City will help, because we had a city member saying that it was a zoning mistake. We all make mistakes. We know an easy solution that will cost the least possible instead of so many attorney fees. We are afraid, we feel threatened. I cannot even go to the corner, they laugh at us. They say that they know people at the city, and some could get fired. If any of you do that, please ask them to just do the right thing. If any of you were in your place, in our place, this would not be happening. One said neighbors are close, but there is no room for a wall. You have room for a wall, we don't. Please be considerate to us. That's the only house in Garden Grove. They said it took them over a year to have that approved. Some saw, some months saw that that was wrong. All neighbors can see that. People with common sense, they drive there and they can see that. Neighbors say there is no room for it. They lie, we are not safe, and when you try to help, they made false promises, and they got away. Please ask them to do the right thing because they're building as fast as possible just to get away. We need your help. Please do for us what you would do for ourselves. When neighbors are getting signatures to a petition, and please, don't let that happen to us or to anybody else. We deserve peace, there is plenty of room for that. Please make a law contacting neighbors before building. Make sure that construction will not ruin neighbors' peace without a reason. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Leland Sisk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, esteemed city staffs. I'm here to, I've got a couple of comments to make about item 5B for the Woodbury Park. I was reading that proposal last night, and I have one comment, one question. I know that those are just bullet points in that paragraph about 5B, but my question was, and I called Community Services this morning, and they said that's just a general sketch, there's no specific plans yet. Item number one, I hope they put water fountains in the park. And I hope when they put water fountains in the park, I don't have a dog, but a lot of people do, and they're an important part of the family, get the fountains that have the little dish down there so you can take care of your animals, alright? We need to stay hydrated, so do they. The other thing I want to mention is that I sincerely hope that the city insists that all the landscaping done in that park be native Southern California plants. They're native here, they use lost water. I'm going to give you an example of one plant that is not native to Southern California, and it's a problem. If you go down Harbor Boulevard by where the new Nickelodeon Hotel is going to be, and you look at those plants that are going in the center divider and along the sidewalk right away, that plant is called purple fountain grass, or Penicetum cetaceum reberum. That's the Latin name. It is not native to Southern California. It grows in northern and eastern Africa. But when it gets planted here, and you can buy it at these big box hardware stores, when you plant it, it takes over. It will drive out the native species. And based on research I've done by a postdoctorate student when I worked at a local wildlife place, the postdoctoral work that this person did indicated that local birds and local animals won't eat that stuff, they won't use it to make nests out of, and eventually, it takes over and drives out the native plants, and so the birds and the animals go somewhere else. So, if the city of Huntington Beach can have a beautiful hummingbird garden, we don't have to have one that big, we don't have that much room, but we can certainly do our part to plant things like Asclepio fasciolaris, the California milkweed, so we can help the butterflies. We can plant buckwheat, which doesn't need water. We can plant desert mallow, which blooms pretty much all year round, couldn't care less if you watered it or not. You can get all these plants, it's a tree of life nursery on Wharatega Highway in San Juan Capistrano. If you've never been down there, should go down there sometime and just take a look around. They've got stuff that will amaze you. So, that's my suggestion, my comment. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Jones. My name's Ray Heimstra. I'm the Associate Director of Programs at Orange County Coast Keeper. I'm here today to talk about the UCI PFOS health study. I sent an email to all of you this morning, and I just kind of wanted to follow up on that. I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Panel, so this is a large nationwide study that's looking at the potential impacts of PFOS, the nonstick substance that, you know, is pretty much everywhere, but this is really focused on how, on the concentrations of that in people from drinking water. So it's a very focused study. Again, it's, this is run by the National Institutes of Health, and there's an Orange County section of this, and UCI is doing that. So the cities of Garden Grove, Anaheim, Orange, and Placentia residents are eligible for participation in this. It's developing important data for us to make big decisions on our water. As a Garden Grove resident, I went ahead and participated and got my blood drawn, and went through the whole process, and got the results, and it's very informative. When I talk to people about it, in fact, I recruited, you know, somebody out earlier. The main thing is, the folks at UCI are doctors, they're not marketing people, they're doing a horrible job of reaching out. So the goal is to get 1,000 participants. We've had 167 so far, and it's been going for about three months. So what I'd like is for the council to make a public workshop, I mean, people are seeing it tonight, but if we can bring more attention to this, even more ideally, work with the project, the people running it, and make a flyer for maybe a mailer to put in the water bills or something like that, social media. For instance, I asked them for some graphics today, and they sent me some text, they just cut it out of their website. They have a nice website, but they need some help. So anyway, I just wanted to bring this issue to your attention and see if we can get the help from Garden Grove to get more people to participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kyle Mason.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I want to thank you all for taking care of a lot of the things behind the Women's Club. They've got a lot of ironwork out of there, they've got the people, some of the homeless out of there, but we've got a major problem at the animal hospital that are going to reopen. Well, they're going to be doing some construction there, but before they do, we've got a lot of homeless around there, and they're going to the bathroom all around the whole area. And I'm also curious about Mr. Durfee. Since before I left on my trip to go see my father in Alabama, I was talking to Mr. Durfee, and he made me the neighborhood watch. And ever since I've been back, I haven't heard from the man. Well, I was told that he was okay. I did a, what is it, wellness check, where they send a police officer over? Well, the one officer was very nice to me, but the other officer, he had a pretty bad attitude towards me. And I asked him, did you see him? He says no, but he said he heard his voice over the wall. Was it a recording, or is it Mr. Durfee? Or is it his son Sean? I'm curious to know. Why did he make the neighborhood watch, and then turn around, and the officer got nasty with me and said that Mr. Durfee's mad at me and doesn't want to speak to me? It's kind of weird. I'm kind of curious, but I'm still going to continue doing what I'm doing, is keeping an eye on things. They still got that Ford truck sitting out there with Arizona tags, it's been there for over a month, hasn't got an engine in it. I got pictures where they're pushing across the street and up and down. I called, you guys did come out and tag it, once. How about the other times and following up? How about the park off of Laurelene? You guys were there last night, 11:30, 12 o'clock, chasing homeless out. And then they're coming through our alleys, and they're hollering. We do clean up our graffiti, pretty much, but we've got a big homeless problem, and we'd like to see the police out there a little bit more pleased. I mean, I don't know what it takes to get you guys to come out there. By the time you guys get out there, they've already done and gone. And the people that are living in that Ford truck, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, they're doing drug dealing. I got pictures of them here, running up the street and around the corner. I mean, I don't know what it takes. The physical evidence? I don't know. I'm done. I guess if you guys don't take care of it, then I guess somebody called nobody will. Talk to you later.
Hi, guys. Good evening. My name is Ruby Garcia, and I'm here to announce and invite all special needs parents with different abilities to join us for a safety night at the Community Meeting Center on October 18th from 5 to 7. We encourage all special needs parents to please come out. This is an all-ages event, adults and children's with all abilities. We have partnered with Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and the Garden Grove Police Department to have this safety night, where kids can learn safety strategies in a safe environment, such as crossing the street, dialing 911, interacting with law enforcement, sorting Halloween candy for safety, and we'll also have guest speakers. I want to thank Maureen over at the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, and Stephanie as well, and the Garden Grove Police Department, who has been very, very helpful and provided a lot of resources, and Kelly over at the Garden Grove PD as well. I'll be leaving some flyers, but everyone is welcome. We look forward to making an impact to all the families, and, you know, hopefully, the families and the childrens and the adults walk away learning more about, you know, how to be safe in our community, because that's all we want, is everyone to come out and feel very, very safe. If they'd like to volunteer or RSVP, you can reach me at 714-856-4914.
Join us. October 18th, from 5 to 7. C-M-C.
Thank you, guys.
You forgot your N, so you're just Maureen. They speak actually better than me. Hello, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager and staff. I wanted to come and personally express our gratitude for the use of the Courtyard for the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and the Downtown Business Association's candidate meet and greet last Saturday, the 24th. There was about 100 residents in attendance. 23 of the 25 invited candidates came, spoke, and brought their campaign swag. I want to really give a shout out to Lena May and her staff, including Jesus, for their incredible attention to detail and hospitality. They not only made the city shine, but they made our association shine as well. Thank you, Mayor Jones, for kicking this off, and I want to thank each of the council people for showing up, for the courtesy to coming out on a hot Saturday. Thanks to Chris Beard for leading the Pledge of Allegiance, and Pastor James Scheller for his prayerful blessings. Karen Durham and Ruby Garcia for being the best kitchen concierge ever. Stephanie Klaufenstein was our emcee, she was flawless. Emerson Klaufenstein was our administrative assistant and kept the candidates on schedule. Thank you to the board members of the GGNA and the Downtown Business Association. Finally, I wanted to thank the residents who came out and the candidates who took time out of their grueling campaign schedules to follow, to allow the residents to meet them up close and personal. The event was one of its kind, and I'm proud it was done in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Borgman.
Hello, I'm Greg Borgman, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all today. I am the Board President for the Greenbrier Terrorists Association, which represents 230 units, approximately 460 voters, and we've been having some issues that I wanted to make sure you all listened to, and perhaps maybe think a little outside the box, because what's going on right now is not helping. And what I'm here to talk about is the homeless situation, the traffic situation, as well as code enforcement. Over the weekend, we had a homeless individual who jumped in the swimming pool, refused to leave. The Garden Grove Police came out, we couldn't do anything. They couldn't do anything to apprehend him. We had to have citizens jump in the pool, a senior citizen, pull him out, another citizen tasered him, and then, they were able to pull him out and arrest him, right? 460 voters there, 65% are senior citizens. They're the ones that we're supposed to be out and protecting. They're the ones that I'm supposed to be protecting as a board president. Whatever's happening isn't working. Now, we're willing to work with the police, we've already met with the police today, the police chief or interim police chief, and we're willing and committed to work on that. But you all need to start thinking a little outside the box. What's currently in place is not working. The traffic is also a situation on Garden Grove Boulevard. So my address is 10411 Garden Grove Boulevard, on the corner of Garden Grove and Netwood. We have had three vehicles slam into our building in the last five years because they were traveling way too fast. That's cost my association an upwards of $65,000 to repair. These are people who live in condos because they can't afford single-family homes. This is a problem. We also have homeless people defecating in the plants, the native Californian plants, by the way, that we keep having to replace and repair. They're ruining our drip system. They're ripping these things out. It's costing my community hundreds of thousands of dollars. I would gladly show you the budget that we have to work with. These are people who scrape by every single week to save money to be able to live in Garden Grove. It's embarrassing. It's absolutely embarrassing. I'm doing the best I can to represent them and to budget this money, but it's costing me continuously money to have to replace sprinkler lines because they're ripping them out, buildings that are being destroyed because cars are going too fast down Garden Grove Boulevard, and I'm trying to make my own little patch look beautiful in a district that frankly, is a hot mess. That's a legal term, right? Hot mess? I don't know. But the buildings around my community look trashy. There's cars that are filled with garbage that are sitting on that side street over by Jay's Catering. I've reported that four times to the city. It's still there, head to toe, with trash. It smells like feces. I've reported... I've reported people who are defecating in our planters. That's got to change, guys. This has got to change. Whatever's happening isn't working. If you need to outsource code enforcement or whatever, do it, because what's happening, it's costing us tons of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Crelet.
Hello, and thank you, and thank you for the time, Council. Appreciate it, and I'm impressed you said my name correctly.
I nailed it. Cool. I was wondering.
That's unusual, so congratulations. Thank you.
I was waiting for the French accent.
That's as French as I get, sorry. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Greg said with just regards to some of the issues with homelessness in our community. I would like to encourage everyone on this council to get more involved and to place a bigger priority on the homeless situation in our community. I note that there's been information sessions held throughout the year. Council member participation and involvement has been scarce. It's a big problem, and even from what I understand from surveys that have been done over the last five years, homelessness is one of the top issues next to traffic. I would think, and I would hope, that all of you on the council would place more importance and significance in dealing with our homeless situation in the community. Again, just following up with what Greg was talking about, I too live in Greenbrier Terraces. Okay? We had a very bad situation that was made worse because our police officers are hand-tied and/or are fearful of enforcing laws, because they're afraid of potential lawsuits and problems happening within the community. That needs to change. We need to get money put behind the homeless issue. Homelessness and the problem in this community has only increased and become worse over the last 10 years. There's not enough focus on it. It's costing our residents, it's costing me, it's costing all of the taxpayers, large amounts of money. And it really doesn't seem like there's a lot going on with that. I think a good area to start is increasing the SRTs with the Homeless Task Force. One of the things that I learned was when we called the police out this past weekend, there's only four people on that task force. There's only four police officers. Why are there not enough police officers in that team to cover seven days a week? They're specially trained, and they have additional training to be able to do that. To cast off people that are not trained is unfair to the police officers that were dispatched to us, and it's unfair to the community. We pay a lot of money. We were kind enough to give this city council an additional 1% sales tax to pay for more police officers. Let's get more police officers trained to work with the homelessness. And again, to use Greg's term, think outside the box. Let's look for innovative solutions to deal with the problems. Okay? With the community home that is coming up within the next couple of years, let's pave the way so that whatever building codes need to be processed and passed, that they're done in a timely and quick manner. Don't make them wait. Please look out for the best interests of this community, as you guys have sworn an oath to do. Please take the time to do that for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who did not turn in a pink card to speak? Please come on forward.
Good evening, Council and Garden Grove residents. It's my first time here at a council meeting, and I do hope all of your issues are addressed and for the better of all of us in the Garden Grove community.
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Robert Esparza. I am actually here for something a little different. Born and raised in the Garden Grove community, and I'm actually the president of the Brown Descent Car Club Association. Started in the 70s. My dad was a member. And we brought it back about seven, eight years ago with a different approach, a different meaning. We, over the last seven years, we've done a lot of stuff for the community locally, and it's actually grown over the years, and now we're all the way out in Long Beach, out to Hemet, Marietta. We've done things locally here, just in this area, as Garden Grove Boys and Girls Club, Women's Home, Feed the Homeless in the area, unfortunately, you know, I mean, everybody. We try to do whatever we can to help out the community and stuff, and do the best we can to help out. But the biggest thing that we've been doing is scholarships for the last seven years to graduating high school seniors. And this year, we did 16, I believe, ranging anywhere from $500 to $2,500 to each student, and that's all raised through the car club, meaning car shows and events like that in the community that we put together. So what we're doing is, at the Orangewood Baptist Church on the corner of Orangewood and Dale, near Rancho Laredo High School, we are putting on a toy drive for our community this, for the holiday season, and all funds, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so all funds in, all funds out to the community. So I'm kind of looking back for the community, because you guys are the ones that helped drive this, and, you know, I'd love to thank everybody that's come out to these events, because you guys are the driving force of why we're able to do this. And so, yeah, so basically what I'm asking is the Garden Grove community to maybe help push our event and show some support, so we can get as many people out there and raise as much funds as possible, so we can help these kids that, you know, they might not have enough for the laptop that will be the driving force of their college career. This is the first year that we've actually had, we had four graduating, college graduates that we had donated or gifted money to, so it was nice to see that. We've got them ranging from Chapman University to, we have one going to Penn State this year. I mean, they're all over the nation, and we've been able to donate because of the Garden Grove residents. So, yeah, please, if you don't mind, I can leave some flyers and place them somewhere. October 15th. Yeah, October 15th. So, thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thank you, brother. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close oral communications. We'll now recess and conduct other legislative bodies, so we'll go to Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member O'Neal?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen? Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie? And Chair Jones?
Here.
All right, we already did oral communications, takes us on to consent, and it's just receiving five of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second. Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sanitary District, and I'll hand it over to President John O'Neill.
Thank you very much. This time, if we can call roll for the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors.
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Bowie? Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
And President O'Neal?
Here.
Thank you very much. We've already done oral communications simultaneously with the council. We do have consent and one item for consideration, so I'll go to the consent items. Entertain a motion. We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Let's call for the vote on the consent.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. And then we do have one item for consideration. We have a staff report.
Item 3A is award a contract to TE Roberts, Inc. for Project CP 1310000, Lamson Avenue, Springdale Street Sewer Improvements Project. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Tonight, the board is being asked to award a contract to TE Roberts, Incorporated, for sewer main construction in Lamson Avenue from Springdale to Lamplighter, and in Springdale Street from Lamson to Lenore. This project will improve the sewer capacity in the area, while not specifically called out in our city's capacity assurance plan. It will help the areas that tie into the sewer. In general, the work includes, but is not limited to, the construction of 1,440 linear feet of 10-inch diameter sewer line using polyvinyl chloride or PVC sewer pipe and all of the related sewer manholes. All of this work is to be completed at a cost over, just over $1.2 million. Staff received an open three bids on July 1st of this year and determined TE Roberts, Incorporated, as the lowest responsible bidder. It should be noted that a lower bid was received, but it was deemed non-responsive. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work the 1st of next year, so January of next year, and should be complete in the summer of 2023. The delayed start is to allow the contractor to perform their own soils investigation in the area, and that is part of the city contract. And the reason for that is, in that part of the city, there's very sandy soil and a high groundwater table. And all that information, we felt would be better if they obtained their own information. The project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with sewer funds. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Could you just clarify? You mentioned 1.2 million. We have a figure of 2 million. My computer kind of froze here for a minute, but...
8.8.
Yeah, can you clarify that for us? Because I'm sure we all have the same question.
No, I'm sorry. I made an error. It is almost 2.4 million dollars.
2.388. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that for everybody up here.
2.388.
Any other questions for staff? Nope? Okay. If you have no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Motion is second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from board members? Seeing none, we will adjourn until the next meeting, October 25th, Tuesday, in this room at 5:30 PM. We'll recess and go over to, or adjourn and go over to council. Thank you.
All right, we shall reconvene. Council moves on to consent items. Recommended that items 3A through 3I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any requests or a motion? Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, public hearings. We have two items listed, so 4A.
Item 4A is acceptance of fiscal year 2021-22 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER. And Mr. Throne is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is the City of Garden Grove's Fiscal Year 21-22 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAPER. The CAPER details federally funded projects and activities that the city completed from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, and outlines the accomplishments that were achieved throughout the fiscal year. Overall, the city assisted approximately 24,700 low-income individuals through various programs and services, which includes the following. We created and retained 36 jobs through the Jobs First Program. We provided 321 home-delivered and congregant meals to Garden Grove residents. Provided rental assistance to 55 homeless or at-risk individuals through the Valley View Senior Villas Program and the HART Program. Provided homeless services to 146 individuals. Assisted 6,695 low-income residents through infrastructure development. Assisted 19 low-income households with home improvement grants. Assisted 6,492 low-income residents with various public and community services. And we provided community outreach and education to nearly 8,500 individuals. In addition, the city expended another $2,665,889 in CARES Act funding in fiscal year 21-22 to develop and expand programs in response to coronavirus. CDBG CV accomplishments include, we created an additional 28 jobs through the Jobs First Program. We provided mental health and wellness services to 1,803 individuals through the BeWell Mobile Response Unit. And we provided an additional 189 individuals with workforce development through the WARP Program and the IC incubator program. In addition, the ESG CV accomplishments include, we provided another 356 individuals with homeless services and housing. In addition, we provided 34 households or 70 individuals with rapid rehousing services. Per the HUD approved Citizen Participation Plan, the city published the required 15-day public notice in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese newspapers. All public comments received during the public comment period will be included in the final CAPER submission to HUD. Staff recommends that city council conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the fiscal year 21-22 CAPER and accept and report, accept the report and direct its transmittal to HUD. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Tim. Any comments or questions, colleagues?
Nope, just thank you for that report.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this CAPER? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing, colleagues.
One quick question before I make the motion. Are any of these individuals duplicating services, or is the 24,000 count, like, one person, one service?
This is unduplicated.
That's right. Thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right, item 4B.
Item 4B is introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving Amendment Number A 35-2022 for focused zoning text amendments. Entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A 35-2022 to Amend Title IX Land Use of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to Make Focused Zoning Amendments to Implement Various Policies and Programs Set Forth in the General Plan Housing Element and Land Use Element, and to Ensure Compliance with Applicable State Housing Laws." And Mr. Chung is here to give the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. In 2021, the city council adopted a focused general plan update and related zoning amendments under General Plan Amendment Number GPA-003-2021, which consisted of updates to the housing element, land use element, and the safety element, and adoption of a new environmental justice element. To comply with state law provisions, including complying with the state's sixth cycle of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, otherwise known as RENA, which required the city to plan for 19,168 residential dwelling units for all income levels during the 2021 to 2029 planning period. Amendment Number A-035-2022 is a continuation of these efforts initiated by the previously adopted focused general plan update. For your consideration tonight is a request by the City of Garden Grove to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to make focused zoning amendments to implement various policies and programs set forth in the housing and land use element, and to ensure compliance with applicable state housing laws. The city is proposing focused zoning text amendments to various chapters of Title IX to update definitions, development standards, and land use action procedures pertaining to single-family residential, multiple-family residential, and mixed-use development, landscaping standards, transitional and supportive housing, and single-room occupancy housing. The city is also proposing to add a new chapter in Title IX containing and consolidating special regulations specifically pertaining to housing development projects. The proposed focused zoning amendments are intended to implement recent updates to the housing element and land summon, and to ensure the city's land use code is consistent with all applicable state housing laws. Prior to tonight's study session, red lines of the proposed code amendments were provided to the city council and also made available to the public on the city's website. We will now move forward to a short presentation on the item, and MIG, the city's consultant, will present a brief rundown of the proposed focused zoning amendments. And following the presentation, staff along with the consultant will be available for any questions you may have. I'd like to now hand the presentation over to Laura Stetson from MIG. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it's nice to be before you again this evening. Chris covered a lot of the overview, and so I'll buzz through some of the earlier slides that we had in the presentation, and this is the third time that we've come before you. So you probably have very good memories about what we've talked about before. We were here most recently back in August. And we're happy to report that the Planning Commission had a hearing earlier this month, September 1st, and we had no changes to the code amendments that were presented to the Planning Commission because of the four study sessions that both the commission and you provided some really great input and allowed us to incorporate... provided some really great input and allowed us to incorporate those things into the code amendments that are before you this evening. Chris reviewed the nine topic areas that these code amendments covered, focused on two key things, on housing, ensuring compliance with the updated general plan, the housing element and the land use element, but critically also to create objective design standards that will facilitate housing development. And so those were the key things that this code, these code amendments address. As kind of a minor point, also, there have been things that are in the code that have caused problems over the last couple of years, and so staff wanted to make sure that they made tweaks to the code. Long as you're cracking it open, you might as well start to address those things that have been problematic. He mentioned that there is a new chapter that's proposed to address most of the new state laws that have come into effect, and your city attorney's office grafted these code amendments that are very comprehensive, including addressing density bonus to comport with state law, and then also to address what are called low-barrier navigation centers, one of which you approved earlier this year. So the city is actually getting ahead of itself in terms of what the code says and versus what's being approved in terms of new land uses in the community. With regard to residential development, there were modest standards made to regulations for single-family homes. We talked about these previously, that the city has policies in place to really guard against taking a single-family home and dividing it up into a lot of little different individual, almost like a boarding house. And so those policies are now codified as part of the zoning code. Just one key thing, and I know it's a funny thing to mention, but it was really important to the Planning Commission, that there no longer be a limit on how many bathrooms a house can have, and so that did come out of the code. There are provisions for small lot subdivisions. These are provisions that are in your code today. It's a great way to create homebuyer opportunities by having single-family homes on smaller lots. It creates economies of scale in building those units. And the amendments were largely focused on making tweaks to things that hadn't quite been quite right as staff has implemented this over time, and also to ensure that small family, excuse me, small lot, single-family homes have the same high-quality design that's expected of any home in the community. And so there are objective design standards that apply to this approach to development as well. I apologize that this is difficult to read. You can probably see it on your screen a little bit better, but I think a real critical amendment that has been made to the code is with regards to your R3, your multifamily zone. There is a maximum density of 32 units per acre that your general plan allows, but the way your code is written today, it does not allow everybody to achieve that. It's based on lot size, and that really does not comport with what state law says you need to do. If somebody's expecting to be building 32 units per acre within this zone, they should be able to achieve that. And so this funny chart is being replaced by a very straightforward, "It's 32, no matter what your lot size is." The place where we probably spent the most time working with city staff is on something called objective design standards. If you work with your zoning code or any zoning code quite a bit, you know that things like height are regulated and setbacks and roof over, well, not roof overhangs, but you know, just the basic regulations. But there are also some provisions in the code that start to deal with the design of the building. What angles are the roof? How do you ensure privacy? Those things that are in the code today had some subjective qualities to them, and state law now does not allow that to be the case. There needs to be, I don't want to call it black and white, but it needs to be a standard that two reasonable people can agree upon, and that's what really the test is in state law. And so we have put design standards into the code to ensure that design quality is high for your multifamily and mixed-use housing, but that it's not too constraining, because developers do like to have flexibility and architects like to be told not what to do, but like to be given some choices. And so the code, both where you can have a yes-or-no type standard, that's in there, but if there are options that should be available to a developer and architect, those are in the code now, and it's something that two reasonable people could agree on what it says. And this will ensure that you're getting the design quality, and I think that's the foremost thing for consideration. This slide shows you what some of those topics are that are addressed, including things like decorative wall materials to make sure that you're not just getting your blank precision block walls. And yes, we've addressed the question of making sure that you can't, that people can't graffiti the walls, that there's landscaping and other things, that make sure that if there is graffiti, it can be cleaned up, but more than anything, to prevent people from having access to walls like that. We also looked at the open space standards, particularly because mixed-use developers, particularly for the more intense mixed-use development, were indicating that the standards were making it tough to achieve the densities and provide the housing that the community desires and needs. And so while the code did not change the requirement of how much open space per unit has to be provided, it did indicate what can be counted as open space, including spots on rooftops, and that can be open space balconies, children's play areas, anything that's really usable. And rather than say, okay, so much has to be private versus public, it provides options for you to change out maybe you have more common open space in exchange for smaller patios and balconies. And so it allows for that trade-off depending on the shape of the lot and what the developer is actually trying to achieve as part of his or her development. And bottom line, there is not a change, as we've said, in the required amount of open space on a property. And how you can calculate that is what has changed. We've also made recommendations for changes in the landscape standards in recognition of the drought conditions. Many years ago, when there was a big concern about drought, the city did allow for artificial turf to be placed in residential, on residential lots. The drought is showing no signs of letting up, and so there's more flexibility built in in terms of what someone can plant in their yard. There can be more mulch and other decorative things that add to the quality of a front yard, but don't require those landscape treatments that are water-intensive. And so the city's making some great moves forward to address the drought conditions throughout California. As I mentioned, there was a public hearing with the Planning Commission back on September 1st. Nobody in the public had any comments, and so there was no need to respond to comments from the public, and very little Planning Commission discussion. There was a 4-0 vote with three members missing that evening. It's summertime vacation, I think. And with that, we are happy to make a request that the city council approve these amendments. And I'd like to extend my thanks to your staff. It's just incredibly dedicated to doing things well and working in concert with the consultant team, both planning staff as well as the city attorney staff, and it's been a pleasure working with them.
Thanks, Laura. Colleagues, any questions, comments? This is a public hearing, so we'll open in a minute. All right. We'll open the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak on 4B? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues, any comments, questions, or a motion? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on this. It's been, you know, months, if not a year, in the planning and a lot of meetings and a lot of in-depth look at this with the Planning Commission and us, and us. Just thank everybody involved for all their hard work on that. And I'll move it. Move the item.
Give a second?
Yeah, just to clarify, oh, I'll give it a second, or she can give it a second. But just a clarification on the, you were talking about the landscaping amendments. Is there any provisions in this for indigenous plants, species, and this type of thing? I'm seeing heads shaking yes, but...
Yes, for native, yes.
Native plants? So that'll be good news to our two speakers.
The butterflies, well, thank you.
The butterflies.
That's for the people.
I'll make one more comment just for the public, so they understand that, you know, a lot of these land, these changes are because of state laws that have been imposed down on the city. So we've looked very carefully at them and included in them, and like was said earlier, Garden Grove is ahead of the curve on a lot of this stuff, because we have a great staff and people looking forward on what we need to comply with. So that's why we do it, is things coming down from the state to make sure it's all incorporated in our code. Thanks.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Oh, oops. I think if you're reminding me.
Motion received. Six yes votes, and Councilmember Bowie is absent.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us on to items for discussion. We have several listed, so we'll go to 5A.
Item 5A is approval to participate in the 2022-2023 Office of Traffic Safety OTS Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP. And I believe the deputy chief is here to give the report.
I am. Mayor Jones, council members, good evening to you. The PD is looking to obtain city council approval to participate in a traffic safety grant through the California OTS. The proposed grant to the city is eligible to receive $325,000 in federal funds to implement DUI and CDL checkpoints and selective traffic enforcement operations. The grant is good from October 1st of this year to September 30th of 2023. Garden Grove PD has participated in similar grants dating back to 1996. The grant that was applied for this year focuses on the reduction of persons killed and injured in alcohol-involved crashes by using best-practice strategies. These include driving under the influence checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, motorcycle safety, distracted driving, educational presentations, pedestrian enforcement, and newly-added street racing operations enforcement. The police and finance departments will be responsible for providing the necessary reporting to fulfill the goals and objectives of this grant. The total amount of the grant, as stated earlier, is $325,000. There is no requirement to hire additional personnel, and there are no out-of-pocket expenses. There is neither cost nor income to the city based on participation in this grant. It is recommended that city council authorize participation in the selective traffic enforcement program, accept the Office of Traffic Safety grant funds in the amount of $325,000. Authorize the police chief, finance director, and finance manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city and allocate these grant monies to fund selective traffic enforcement operations. This concludes my report. I'm open to any questions.
Thanks, chief. Yeah, go ahead, George.
Just a quick question. So some of these funds can now be utilized for the street racing details and that type of thing?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I'm going to make that very clear, very clear so the public knows.
Colleagues, any other questions coming? Yeah, okay. Please go ahead.
Second.
All righty. Roll call vote.
Six yes votes with Councilmember Bowie absent.
All right. 5B.
5B is award a contract to David Volt's Design Landscape Architects, Inc., for project number S-1298 to provide consultant services for the revitalization and expansion of Woodbury Park. And Ms. Palio from Community Services is here to give the report.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. This evening, staff is requesting that the city council award a contract to David Volt's Design Landscape Architects, Incorporated, for project number S-1298 to provide consultant services for the revitalization and expansion of Woodbury Park. On June 29, 2022, a request for proposal was released for qualified design firms that would be interested in providing consultant services for the preparation of plans and specifications, including engineered cost estimate for the revitalization and expansion of this park. There were four qualified proposals received on July 27th. The committee scored each proposal based on the criteria that was provided in the RFP for a total of 400 points. Following the review of these total scores for the four proposers, the committee scheduled interviews with the two highest-scoring proposers. Those were David Volt's Design and RJM Design Group, Incorporated. The additional points for these interviews were a total of 10 points perator for a total of 40 points. Based on the scores of the top two proposers evaluated and interviewed, the committee recommends that the contract be awarded to David Volt's Design for a total amount of The contracted services will have no financial impact to the city's general fund. This project is budgeted in the capital improvement projects and funded by the Proposition 68 statewide grant program. To conclude, staff would like to recommend that the city council award a contract to David Volt's Design Landscape Architects to provide the consultant services for the Woodbury Park project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
I'd like to make the motion.
All right. All righty. Call the vote?
George.
Bookends.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Well, thanks, guys.
Motion received. Six yes votes, and Councilmember Bowie is absent.
All righty. 5C.
5C is award a contract to Stephen Dorick Equipment Rentals, Inc., for project CP-1286000 Orangewood Avenue, Dale Street Water Improvements Project. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to Stephen Dorick Equipment Rentals, Incorporated, to provide fireflow capacity improvements in the areas bounded by Orchard Avenue to the north, nearing Drive to the east, Dale Street on the west, and Yorkshire Avenue on the south. It should be noted the project will replace older asbestos cement pipe that is at the end of its design life. In general, this waterline replacement work will include the construction of about 1,700 feet of 12-inch and 6,100 feet of 8-inch diameter domestic water pipe. It also includes the construction of required hydrants, water service connections, and connections to existing water lines. All this work is to be completed at a cost just over $2.7 million. Staff received and opened 11 bids on August 29th of this year and determined that Stephen Dorick Equipment Rentals, Incorporated, to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in November and should be complete by the end of summer in 2023. This project will be paid for with water funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Any comments, questions? Stephanie?
Yeah, just a quick question. The kind of pipe that was in place in the 50s versus what's being used now? What do you surmise the duration of that pipe being in the ground for now, consistent?
It's, the pipe that we're putting in is PVC pipe, polyvinyl chloride, or forget the whole proper name of that. But that's supposed to be another 50 years. We'll see, you know, that's an estimate. The big factors on its design life include acidity in the soil and all that other type of stuff. Could go longer.
All right. I'll make the motion. Unless you have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
One, I have a quick question is, notification of the residents, obviously, in those areas are a little tight, especially with the high school. Will we get notification out to the public when we're going to be working ahead of time?
Definitely.
I know that's coming, you know?
Yeah.
So if we can get on that, it would be great.
That's why we're anticipating it takes, taking so long to, is...
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
Never mind.
All right. I believe we have a motion in a second, so we'll call the vote.
Six yes votes, and Councilmember Bowie is absent.
Okay. That will take us on to matters, and we do have one listed. So this is item 6A. Discussion on Garden Grove's existing filming regulations and to explore opportunities for increasing filming activities as requested by the city council. Who wants to start on that one?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this report is to provide you, the city council, with information on Garden Grove's existing filming regulations and offer recommendations for streamlining and encouraging filming activities in Garden Grove. According to Garden Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 8.8, on regulation of filming activities, the City of Garden Grove has established regulations which govern filming activities within the city. Under the provisions of the municipal code, parties interested in filming in Garden Grove are required to submit a permit application at least three days prior to the first day of proposed filming, and must provide information regarding the nature of the filming activity, locations and addresses, number of personnel, contact information of the involved parties, hours... the City of Garden Grove has established regulations which govern filming activities within the city. Under the provisions of the municipal code, parties interested in filming in Garden Grove are required to submit a permit application at least three days prior to the first day of proposed filming and must provide information regarding the nature of the filming activity, locations and addresses, number of personnel, contact information of the involved parties, hours and dates of operation, and the equipment expected to be used for filming. Along with the application, interested parties are also required to submit proof of insurance and an application fee of $250. However, this only applies to commercial applications. Upon submission, applications are reviewed by the city manager or his or her designee and are circulated to impacted city departments in order to ensure that the proposed filming activities do not unreasonably interfere with traffic and pedestrian movement, endanger public peace and quiet enjoyment of private property, or otherwise negatively impact public health and safety. At present, all information related to the regulation of filming activities in Garden Grove is only available in the city's municipal code. Whereas several cities have dedicated webpages that clearly outline their respective filming regulations, permit application requirements, and associated fees, the City of Garden Grove currently does not have a centralized location where studios, production companies, or students can quickly and easily access similar information. Instead, any party interested in filming in Garden Grove is required to navigate the city's webpage and filter through building and safety permits in search of the film permit application or municipal code. Thus, although the City of Garden Grove has established regulations for filming activities, developing a dedicated webpage with clearly outlined information would significantly reduce barriers for parties interested in filming within the city. In addition, cities interested in encouraging greater filming activities also stand to gain from working with local film commissions to highlight city attractions. Specifically, city staff can work with the state film commission to prepare and send packages to studios' lead location managers in order to market the city's most significant attractions and locations. Although studios and production companies have the ultimate say in whether to film in a specific city, maintaining an active relationship with location managers as well as a film commission would not only increase the city's visibility within the film community, but also lead to greater filming opportunities through increased awareness. As a follow-up to all of this, city staff contacted Orange County Film Commissioner Janice Arrington, who reinforced the importance of having a streamlined webpage and an ongoing relationship with the California Film Commission. Thus, as Garden Grove looks to encourage greater filming opportunities in the city, focusing efforts on updating the permitting process, providing an easily navigable webpage, and highlighting Garden Grove's greatest attractions in a centralized location will be greatly beneficial to the city. As such, it is recommended that the city council direct staff to develop a dedicated webpage on the city's website with information on Garden Grove's filming regulations, permit application requirements, associated fees, and local attractions, and also direct staff to proactively collaborate with state and county film commissions to develop relationships with local, with local location managers and market the city's attractions. And lastly, to direct staff to review best practices for streamlining the city's existing filming regulations and report back to the city council. That concludes this report.
Thanks, Sean. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you, Sean, for putting this together, and I'm glad that you were able to meet with my counterpart, Janice, who's great. Luckily, we have someone from the California Film Commission who can help with that relationship building. But also, I still want us to explore whether we get this done first and then come back to it, but working with our local businesses and hotels to create some sort of incentive program for when and if we do have folks coming out to film in the City of Garden Grove or even anywhere in Orange County. Many of them may opt to have hotel stays or gather in places that are, have a lower tax than some neighboring cities and/or lower rates than some other cities. So I still want to explore having that on that same webpage so that folks can know that they have better options. I think we've talked about this multiple times with the Anaheim Harbor kind of tourism district. Our hotels are advertised as Anaheim Grove or just Anaheim District. I can't remember the official title, but our prices are different than those of, on the Anaheim city. So I want to make sure that we're highlighting that, emphasizing that, and if we can work with our hotels to do block rates, that's great. I mentioned previously to my colleagues that some of the barriers in filming outside of a specific radius that's allowed by the film commission, by state regulation, is that it costs too much to pay for room and board for the staff that are on the film crew. So if we can help alleviate that and incentivize them to do that here, I think that that's a great opportunity that's lacking in the other cities that have done some, some stuff. We, we have a lot of different neighborhoods and aesthetics to highlight and to promote here in Garden Grove and to incentivize folks to come in and visit us and spend their money here and highlight what a beautiful city we are in different ways, and we've been featured in multiple different movies. I will hold ground that, you know, we're in Star Trek, so we're super cool. And so, you know, maybe we'll be in Star Wars one day. I don't know. So there's plenty of opportunities, and I know that this came as a conversation through a pilot program, a pilot show that will hopefully be airing soon. I've still remained in contact, and I want to thank the city manager for helping me with the Westminster City Manager to ensure that that crew and that production goes away, comes away flawlessly. I would love to have a show featuring young Vietnamese women growing up in Little Saigon. I know that that would have been a really cool show to have while I was a teenager, but, you know, I will guilty pleasure watch it afterwards as a 31-year-old. But I want to thank my colleagues for indulging this ask and for the staff, or for Sean, for putting this all together. And I would like to make the motion to approve, and if any of my colleagues have questions or comments.
All right, action item, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie absent.
All right, we'll go around the horn. Any other matters, Kim? Since you're on a roll.
Thanks. October is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. One of four pregnancies end in miscarriages, and on August 16th, unfortunately, I became one of those four. I am so grateful for the number of my Garden Grove family, my specific few of my colleagues, residents, friends, and community leaders who helped me during this difficult time, whether it was tracking down Advil during a meeting for my physical pain or making me world-famous chicken soup, or sharing words that brought them comfort through this awful shared experience. Myself and my partner, David Penalosa, most of you know him as a council member in our neighboring city of Sineana, thought long and hard before sharing our experience publicly. But many of you know, over the years, I have always shared publicly much of my story, even those that are taboo topics. Ultimately, I'm glad that we shared our story because hundreds of people reached out, men and women, sharing stories of how cold and insensitive physicians were when breaking the news, the struggle of fighting for bereavement leave from work, the expectation to kind of bounce back and go back to work or attend city council meetings or city events. Everyone grieves differently, and our support networks are the ones that help us get through this difficult time, but they are also not always equipped with what to say when this is a topic that we don't talk about. And so I wanted to ask my colleagues to allow and support proclaiming October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month as a way to help all of the grieving families here, many of whom I've been able to speak through for the last month, for not just my little bean in the sky, but for the tiniest little Gigi residents that never were able to come to live here in our city and for the families that are here mourning their loss. And with that, I would like to motion to have this agenda set at the next meeting to proclaim October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month.
Question, is, is there something that needs to be written up or drafted or whatever to be able to come back?
Yes, I have emailed.
Otherwise, since we're in the last meeting of September and you're talking about something relevant to October, should we do an urgency item thing to pass tonight, or does something need to be drafted first?
I think something has to be drafted first. I did reach out to city staff, Marie and Terry, to help with that. I know that the State of California has one on an annual basis, so maybe we can look at theirs as a, a model to draft the one specifically for Garden Grove.
And just quick, can we add that as annual from now on?
All right, call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you for sharing that, Kim. I know all of us on this dais have experienced in the past so many years that we've been working together loss and triumph and happiness and sadness. And it does, it definitely has kind of created this little family up here. We've all worked together for a long time. And I think when we had the candidate meeting grade over the weekend, and I'm sitting there listening to these potential new council members speaking and realizing that this dais is going to change, and that's very bittersweet. It really is. It's been, it's been such an honor to work with each and every one of you. I just wanted to make a couple of mentions of things on the council agenda tonight that we passed that we really didn't touch heavily upon, one of which was under the consent calendar for West Haven Park. West Haven sits in District 5. And it's been, in the process of being completed, the landscaping and the grass and turf and so forth. We have our PFOS facility there at that park. There's a lot going on. So to see some completion of those improvements is very exciting, and I hope families can get back out there and enjoy the turf and enjoy that park. And then the capper, it just, when you go over this, it's such an incredible scope of work. And obviously, we see this year after year, time after time. And, you know, it can be dry, and it can be daunting to read through, but it is really important. And so if, if this interests you at all, to the residents, just to look through some of this and really, really help to understand what it is that the city is doing, especially when addressing homelessness and some of these key issues. There was so much grant money being funneled into this county. It's just unbelievable, and we were lucky to obtain so much of it. And it went to some fantastic and amazing programs, whether we are looking at BeWell or, as I said, our homeless outreach and, and education and so forth. So it's something to look into, and if you find that it's interesting, that's where maybe jumping on a commission at some point could, could really benefit the city as well. Our Neighborhood Improvement Commission actually look at this before it comes to council. So just something to think about. And there was one other thing. Oh, the zoning amendments. Gosh, that's bittersweet. It does pain me a little bit to see some of the loss of local control. These mandates are tough to swallow, but again, as residents, I just encourage you to educate yourself and at least know what's going on and understand that in so many cases, our hands are tied, but we want our community to stay beautiful and, and welcome everyone. And, but it is, it is difficult at times for me to, to hit the yes button on that one. So anyway, thank you.
George.
Well, campaign time again, and, you know, out shaking hands, kissing babies, doing all the, all the things, and, you know, I, I can't get down one street in my district without having to hear a horror story about planning or code enforcement or, dare I say it, building inspections. For four years, coming up on four years now, we've been harping on it, you know, how our city is the absolute worst in the county, absolute worst. Still, after all this, I, I think pretty much everyone up here has made comments about it. There's been no improvement. Four years later. We're still having to wait 30, 60 days for inspections. We're still having, city staff not giving all the information maybe to people. I, I had one gal was telling me, she was waiting for her plans to be approved, and, oh yeah, they're approved. Took a long time to wait, and she was fine with that. But, oh, you gotta get this done, and you gotta get this done, and you gotta get this done too now. Well, why didn't you tell me that a month ago when I submitted this so I could have gotten all that handled? You know, I think sometimes staff just thinks that everybody's a contractor or everybody's a developer. Most of the time, it's just our community, just members trying to do something to their bathroom or, you know, put in a new hot water heater or something. Every one of these people tell me the cost to them is minimal in the hundreds, some of them in the thousands because of the delays. And this is repeated over and over. I literally haven't gone down one street in my district yet without getting one of these. At this point, four years later, I'm forced, you know, I, I know we've tried to address it. We, we've said we're going out to outside companies to, to supplement it. We've, you know, I know that there was problems with some staff being hired away by a private company. I know that, but there's always these excuses for four years now. And I, I have to believe either staff is unwilling to change or they're incapable of change. It's one of the two at this point. Four years later. Four years. Not one bit of improvement. The community screaming for it. I think we've all brought it up. Everyone here's, gets the complaints. I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there. In three months, first meeting in January, I'm gonna call for a vote of no confidence on all the directors over this department. In three months, I'm gonna call for it. Either we get change, we get improvement, significant improvement within three months, or it's coming. All right? If we need to form a committee and fix the problem ourselves, then we need to do that. We need to roll up our sleeves because apparently staff can't. It's been four years, and apparently staff is incapable of fixing this problem. I literally have contractors telling me they refuse jobs at Garden Grove because it's too laborious and they're not, it's gonna take forever to get stuff done. I had a real estate agent two days ago tell me the same thing. She called three different contractors, and they all declined her because the job was in Garden Grove, and they're not gonna take a job in Garden Grove because they can't get permits. It's becoming really bad. And obviously, after four years, we can't get any improvement at all. It, it might come down to us taking action as a body because we're just not seeing any, any improvement. So I'm gonna bring that up, first meeting in January. If we don't see significant improvement by then, that's three months. That's three months. I think that's fair after four years of waiting. We have these huge projects coming. We have no business taking those on if we can't let our community get a permit for their water heater in a timely manner or an inspection in a timely manner. We have no business putting in navigation centers and Nickelodeons and any of this stuff if we can't handle the small stuff. That's my comment.
Thank you. Sean?
Thanks, George. I got a phone. I understand your frustration. On a happier note, myself and everyone here attended the candidate forum that the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association and the Downtown Business Main Street Association put on. I, I thought that was a great forum. You know, every, all the candidates got to speak their few minutes, get to hear about what they're about, and then everybody can retreat and go to the candidates they want to support or hear from the other folks. So it was a great, great day there for a few hours, and everybody got, you know, got educated on who those candidates are. So thank you so much for that. Regarding the, there's a lot going on in the city. I just want to remind folks, we don't just come to these meetings. Every day, we're, we're entrenched in homelessness, violent crimes, all sorts of mental illness. I mean, you name it. We're, we're engaged. This council is very engaged on a daily basis. I can speak to that. Got some very bright colleagues here, and they're engaged every day with the police department, with the city, the code enforcement, although there's a room for improvement everywhere, right? And sometimes, a lot of things are being forced down upon us from the state, and we're trying to adapt. What we can do, what we can't do legally as a city. But we are all working hard to accomplish all these things at the same time. And I, I think we're doing well. There's room for improvement. But I, I just want people to know we're working on a daily basis. We all get calls every day on mental illness or, or crime or parking or code enforcement, ADUs. You know, you name it, go down the list. But, and then just, I wanted to kind of dedicate this meeting. I had a childhood friend that grew up in my street, my neighborhood. You know, she was very young, just in her early 60s, passed away recently in the, one of our neighborhood kids. So to me, that's tough to see somebody you grew up with has passed away already. One of the neighborhood kids from the 60s, and, you know, so. Janelle Mokehi Marriott was her name. So God bless her. Rest in peace.
I just want to piggyback on, on what John said. Many, all of us actually stay very engaged. We all get called every day. We are addressed the matters right away. We work in very close with the police officer, building departments. We might, we want to make sure the matters get addressed and get solved as quickly as possible. And I, I think that's what we've been signed up for, just our responsibility to stay engaged and to make sure the addressing the matters. But on another note, I think we, the most important thing is we stick, you know, we work together. Being transparent, communication is the, is the basic thing. And come back to, thank you, Gigi. And come back to, thank you, GGNA. Thank you, the Main Street Committees for hosting the, the candidate meet and greet. I think that's, that's very wonderful. We should continue doing, doing so every single election so the community will inform and know the candidates. So, thank you so much for organizing it. And last, happy birthday to my oldest one. He just turned sixteen yesterday. Scary thought. Next thing is there behind the wheel, so, ah!
General counsel, anything to report or any need for a closed session after this meeting?
Yes, Mayor, we did have a, two closed session items earlier this evening, and there is no reportable action out of any of those items.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, two items. One is, we have just issued temporary certificates of occupancy for the first one-hundred-and-eighty-eight of the four-hundred units at the, what used to be known as the Steel Skeleton, the Garden Brook Village Apartments. So, at night, I think you'll start to see some of those units lit up at night with residents moving in, so we're excited about that, and then...
No more Rusty Skeleton.
Seven years ago, I said if there's one thing I'm gonna get done, it's, it's gonna get that redone, so two-hundred more units to come online.
I said that twenty years ago.
It's all been, it's all been, as we know, fully occupied. There's a waiting list, and that tells you how, how important it is for housing and, and good housing that people can afford, so we're very excited about that. Also, I want to mention to councilmembers, the, our navigation center, which is a center for homeless individuals, councilmembers approved the acquisition of that site, and we've talked about it at a couple of meetings. I do want to let you know that the seller has indicated a willingness to close escrow with us sooner than we had hoped, so that will allow that project to move forward faster. We all know how important homeless issues are, and we've got all kinds of things going on, and so we're trying to get this, the navigation center up and running as quickly as possible. I will mention to everybody, we've got several things in the works related to that. We are, we're going to have to come back to council with a memorandum of understanding between the cities of Westminster, Fountain Valley, and Garden Grove to fund and operate the center, so we're working on that right now with all the cities. We're also working with the county on an MOU between the county and Garden Grove that will operate, that will determine the funding that the county has provided to us, both for the operations and build-out costs related to that facility. So, we're, we're really quite busy trying to make sure we're fast-tracking that project and, and keeping that going, so wanted to bring the council up to speed on those two items. That's it, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Thank you. All righty, and with that, we will stand adjourned. Everyone, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.